Yeah, that's free. I bought it.
Let's call the meeting to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Can I get approval of the minutes of meetings held October 23rd and November 1st? Please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. See, none, that passes. We have one person wishing to address the board. John, if you'd come up and give us your name and your address. And then you've got about five minutes.
All right, I'm John Gillan. I'm a student in Lincoln. I live 701 North Sandberg Drive, down 6th. Just open my presentation, go for it?
Oh, sure.
Okay, yeah. So. I don't even know how to use. Yep, okay, there we go. I got it. All right. My presentation is on ad blockers. Why we should have them. Why we need them. So if you want to see the presentation, you can use that link. So it's all backwards. I don't know. So one of the reasons why we'd use ad blockers is students at home on kind of affordability plans for their internet connection may have a network cap, which means that when they reach a certain amount of usage of their network, midco will kind of slow things down or they might stop it entirely. So if we give students access to ad blockers on their Chromebooks, many students, since they're only device, they can reduce strain on their own network. What is going on? This is very weird. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
One of the benefits of ad blocking is it can block some forms of malware. It's not an issue on the Chromebooks that the school issues because they run on a Linux system, but Windows desktops are susceptible to many forms of what's called malvertising. It's kind of a silly word. So I did a little bit of research on my own. I quickly spent five minutes and I looked around on websites. I made sure I kept track of what I did. And based on a study that I found, it said that around 30 to 45 percent of network usage can be decreased by using ad blockers. Another study suggested that maybe you draw a bit less power, but I don't think that's anything. So there's just the raw data. Put that in context. In five minutes, I got 9.68 gigabytes. So give me 15 minutes and I'll have the entire Lord of the Rings trilogy downloaded onto my laptop, including the extended cuts. So there's a bit more data. So the largest jump back here, the big black bar, that was YouTube. YouTube got a lot of advertising. It got a lot of analytics. And all the little individual green bars, all those were websites coming back and giving me that information. So even though I had very slow speeds, you can't see it, but it's four megabytes per second, two megabytes per second, it still consumed a lot of bandwidth. So these are all the sites I use. YouTube Video, the Google Doodle, Wikipedia, and some Google stuff. So there are two effective solutions. You could use a client-based ad blocker like Ublock Origin, AdBlock Plus, AdGuard, or you could use a DNS-based URL denial. We have a DNS server. I've seen it go. And you can just simply tell it, don't look up, add domains, just don't give them to people. I think using both of these in combination will be the most effective solution. The efficiency of the ad blockers is a little less efficient than using DNS servers because it's still fetching data, but it's just not rendering them on the laptops and the desktops. But it still will help them run faster. They're much easier to install and configure, too. It is a simple policy. Require Ublock Origin as an extension. So my slideshow's all wonky. I don't know why. But I think I've covered it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really well-done presentation and very well-researched as well. Just a question. Have you gone to any of your school administrators to suggest this?
I've tried talking to what we call the guy, the Chromebook castle guy. He's in our library. He does repairs on Chromebooks. I asked him about it and he kind of told me that I should talk to the school board and that I should talk to the director of IT and Technology. I don't remember his name.
Michael Christoperson.
That's right.
He's on the end.
Yeah, well, you guys can talk then, maybe after the meeting. So, well, thank you for coming down and talking with us. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I get an approval for the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that passes. Good news report. Deanne.
Well, good evening. Every day, of course, is a celebration in the Sioux Falls School District. Today especially, though, is the start of American Education Week. And that is denoted as a time to celebrate public education and to honor the many people who contribute to the success of our public education system here in Sioux Falls. As you know, it takes many dedicated employees to provide the best education possible to our students, whether that be custodians, education assistants, clerical, principals, teachers, administrators, and at the risk of leaving someone out, I hope I don't, but we certainly want to extend our appreciation to all employees, especially on the American Education Week start. The National Education Association, I found this interesting, was one of the creators and original sponsors of American Education Week, starting back in December of 1921. And the whole reason for this is that at that time, 25% of the country's World War I draftees were illiterate and 9% were physically unfit, causing some obvious challenges on the war front. So the National Education Association and also the American Legion co-sponsored the start of American Education Week. And at that time, they called for an educational week observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public about the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. That talks a bit about our partnerships we have in our community. Just earlier today, we had our kickoff to our second annual Night of Hope in Kiri. That is a fundraiser the Sioux Falls Storm puts together and generates a lot of impact for our schools. So we're excited for that partnership as well as many of the other partnerships that we have going on in our community. And of course, it is the staff that makes us who we are. And Ben Schumacher from our department has done a fantastic job launching a new program that we air on our social media channels, as well as KayLearn and our website, our YouTube channel. It's called Staff Stars. And that is really getting some traction and providing that important appreciation for our staff members and the role that they play because we certainly couldn't do it without them. Further, I wanted to take this opportunity to share with you that in addition to American Education Week, it's National School Psychology Week. So of course, we have school psychologists, so we have to extend our appreciation to those folks as well and thank them for the support that they provide in our schools as well. And then I would be remiss if I did not mention the biggest event in the Sioux Falls School District, which culminated late on Saturday evening. Roosevelt High School and Washington High School football teams were in the championship at the Dakota Dome this weekend. And certainly, we'd like to congratulate both teams and their coaches for representing the excellence that you can truly find in the public schools, whether that be in the classrooms or whether that be in our extracurricular activities. So Rough Riders and the Warriors, it was a true battle. Of course, the Warriors claimed the title this time, 21 to 20. And so we thank those students for representing their schools positively and for showcasing what public schools are all about.
Thanks, Deanne.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Any conflicts of interest to report? See any. Can I get approval of the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right. That passes. And moving on to the supplemental consent agenda. Items 9A, 1 through 4, claims to Sandford. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That passes with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. And can I get a motion for items 9B, 1 and 2, claims to Avera, please?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Right, that passes from one abstention from myself. All right, on to the reports for the superintendent.
Okay, we'll have four reports for you this evening. The first report will be regarding the ACT. And there to deliver that report is Mr. Morrison, our Director of Research, Innovation, and Assessment.
Good evening, everybody. My pleasure this evening to give you an update on the ACT results from the last senior cohort. Give you some general information on what we saw. We were actually able to move the number of participants. You can see up from where they were in the 15, 16 school year, so that's good. And you can also see, as you're aware, our number of graduating seniors went up as well as did our graduation rate. So the percent of graduates that participated in the ACT went down slightly. Probably a mix of our graduating cohort went up. The number of those taking the ACT wasn't as much as the previous cohort, but probably to be expected to some extent, so we'll continue to watch that. Nationally, about 60% of graduating seniors take the ACT, so we're still above that. Another good news item, the percent that scored 24 or higher moved up a percent, so from 46.1 to 47.1 percent. So very good news there. Looking at the components that make up the ACT, English, the English component typically has been the district's lowest. We were able to actually move that up from 21.6 to 21.8. And you can see we're well above the, either the state or the national standard, so a good news trend on that indicator. Looking at mathematics, flat to where we were. And it's stayed pretty steady. You can see the state went down slightly. On a national basis, went up a touch, but we're still almost 2% above the national rate on math. Reading, stayed flat. Again, the state down slightly, nationally up slightly, and we're still almost two percentage points above the national rate. Science, another positive trend for us there. We moved from 23.1 to 23.2. State went down slightly. National went up slightly, so starting a good trend there from this last year. And then when you look at the composite, we stayed flat at 22.9. The state went down slightly and the national went up slightly, but we're still well above the state average and the national average. So although we didn't move the bar, we did move the bar in two subsets of that, just not enough to move the overall composite. This is something, when you get the ACT report, that they talk a lot about college readiness. And so you can see on the far right, they've set their benchmarks of the scores that they feel would indicate that students are college-ready. So you can see English there of 18, math 22, reading 22, and science 23. And then you can see the percent of our kids that have made those benchmarks on the left-hand side there. And you can see that against the state and the national average, our kids do far better at being at, and that's a good sign of our district preparing kids for the rigor of college in every area. And then when you look at all four combined, we're far exceeding either the state or the national average. So that's an important one, that we're sending our kids to school college-ready. They also talk a lot about the just kids that are taking the core or above the core and kids that aren't taking the core. This is an interesting indicator because students have to self-select if they're taking above the core or not core. So I don't know how much to put into this, but you could see students that indicated they took less than the core went up slightly. Again, it's a self-reporting thing. We know our graduation requirements are at least what the core is, so I'm not sure what to read into that, but you'll see a lot of that in the report that the district gets. Their point is that on this slide here, you can see for kids that indicate that they're taking the core or more do far better than, of course, the kids that are taking a less rigorous path. So I think that's what they're trying to point out here. Don't see really much to report on here, other than it's kind of an obvious indicator. Demographics, something I looked at because I'm, you know, interested always looking at the participation of our district. And actually, we do pretty well, I think, in all subgroups, except the American Indian subgroup continues to lag behind in the participation rate. So I think it's important that we, as we do with all our indicators, we're looking at participation rate to hopefully reflect the demographics of the district. So we continue to watch that and try to put strategies in place to continue to pick those subgroups up. So that kind of gives you a flavor from that perspective. As you're aware, our strategic plan contains components that relate to many different indicators across the district. This report would tie into the strategic goal that by 2020, the percent of graduates scoring 24 or more would increase 5%. So you can see we're trending the right way. We went from 414 to 428 kids that exceeded that benchmark, and we moved up a full percent. So we're well on our way to a good trajectory on that. One thing in trying to look at participation and how we drive that up and the types of kids that we think can have the rigor of the ACT, one thing I'm looking at is that trying to correlate it to the Smarter Balance test. So thinking that kids that score in three or four on a Smarter Balance test in some of our indicators would be the ones that would more than likely take the ACT exam. And so trying to look at kids that scored high on Smarter Balance but didn't take the ACT, and we'll be reaching out to the building principals and counselors to maybe understand why some of these kids didn't take the ACT. It could be for a host of reasons. Maybe they're going into the military or other things. But it's an indicator to be aware of and something that we may be able to look at to keep trying to drive the participation rate up. So we had about 50 kids from the senior cohort last time that didn't take it. And right now, we're sitting at about 100 juniors that haven't, or seniors now, that haven't taken it yet. So now a lot of them maybe have just taken it this fall. We'll kind of see that number may shrink over time, but it's another way of example of being able to take data and drive inside and look at how we can change some indicators. I think another thing to note is that we'll have to see how the ACT plays out over the years, as less colleges may require the ACT as an entrance requirement. We've seen our own Board of Regents say, come out with some early indicator or admission guidelines as opposed to the ACT. Looking at Smarter Balance, again, if you achieve certain scores on your Smarter Balance, you don't have to take the ACT. You can go to the college. The next one to come out is grade point average. So they are now going to look at grade point average, and I think that's the next year will be, if you have a 2.5 grade point average, then that's another indication of. So we'll have to watch the ACT and what colleges do. And if they start to pivot off that as an entrance requirement, we may see participation rate on that go down. We'll see. And another question that Board Member Mickelson had was around the cost to take the ACT. So there is a process by which there's, you know, essentially, counselors can work with our students that can't afford to take it, and based on some criteria, they can get some, they can be able to take the ACT for free. So our counselors work with the schools for that. So otherwise, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you for answering my questions earlier, Doug. My, does our counselors or the College Readiness Board, would they provide us also that information, like on SAT, if people just take the SAT and do not take the ACT?
Yeah. I still have a follow-up. I haven't seen anywhere where we've captured the SAT information, but I still have that on my list to follow up, and I'll get that to all of you. I don't know. It doesn't come, you know, like with the ACT, we get a report card, which is very thorough. I haven't seen the same on the SAT, and I don't know if we capture it anywhere else. I've got a few notes out, and I'll get that back to everybody, so.
It seems like the ACT is more Midwestern accepted, you know? So if you're not planning on leaving the Midwest, a lot of people probably don't take the SAT.
Right. Just curious if that affected our numbers at all.
Yeah. So I owe you a follow-up on that one.
I have a couple of questions. How often do we offer the ACT in the district?
It's.
It's a national offering. So we offer it whenever it's nationally offered.
Twice a semester?
I think it's four times annually.
Yeah, I think it's four times a year.
December.
Six times.
Six times annually.
And that's locally here, that they can?
You go to like Augie or somewhere.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, just a.
Second question I had, kind of going around the, your comment also about the SATs, but also with the Board of Regents, maybe not using the ACT anymore. Are we seeing that as a national trend, that universities and colleges are going away from those SATs or ACTs as a metric for acceptance?
Yeah, I haven't, I mean, I haven't seen that. I think the kids don't exactly know where they're going to go, so they take the ACT maybe out of preparation that I might apply to five places and one of them's going to require it. So it will be interesting, though, I think, as colleges compete with one another. If they can look to other things. I know the state, our state already captured the Smarter Balance, you know, information, so they have that on, and they can use that. And probably a pretty good correlation, if you can score a certain, you know, on your math, Smarter Balance, your reading, Smarter Balance, that it's going to correlate pretty roughly to, you know, a certain ACT score. Grade point is an interesting one, so it just seems like they're trying to get more South Dakota kids into our public universities and looking at different pathways between just, besides just the ACT.
How does your data that you share look at students who've taken the test multiple times? Like I know when I was in high school, I took it as a junior, and then I took it again as a senior. So how would that play into your numbers? Would that, does it only take one per student? Does it take it each year that somebody takes it? Do you know?
Takes their highest score in what we're looking at here.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a, there's probably a progression. I would assume you get better over time, but.
I don't know that, I don't know that we get the information disaggregated, but I know that what is calculated is your highest score regardless of how many times you take it.
Okay. So there's no duplicates of the scores? You're getting one per student?
No, no. Yeah, these are unique. This is the highest score for 917 unique students.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Todd. All right, can I get a motion to approve the ACT report, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, moving on.
Our second report tonight comes from our Curriculum Services, is in regards to our English Language Learners Program, and will be delivered to you by Demi Moon.
Good evening. Oh, there we go. Wonderful. All right, this is the annual update of our English Language Learner Program. And the picture you see in front of you is from a week and a half ago at the Elementary Immersion Center, and it is the musical production of Three Nanny Goat's Gruff. And it was a wonderful performance. All students, including the main speaking parts, of all students who have been in the country for less than two years in grades K through 5, they did an exceptional job. All right. New students to Sioux Falls School District. That pretty much sums up our immersion, or what we call our newcomer students. In 2016-17, we had 627 new students enroll through the ELL Intake Center. So far, as of November 1st in 2017, and for the 2017-18 school year, we have had 301 new students enroll through our intake center. And I was asked earlier today if that's about on track for where we were last year, and it is. It's almost exactly where we were a year ago. And we have every hopes of continuing to enroll at a rate that will get us close to that 627 mark again by the end of this year, if things continue at the same rate. Currently, there are 2,353 ELL students in the Sioux Falls School District. Again, that was as of November 1st, and I checked today. And since then, we have had seven additional ones join our district. Although our refugee numbers are decreasing, which has been a national trend and been in the national news, so we are not getting as many refugees coming as directly to Sioux Falls, our immigrant numbers and our secondary migrant numbers are increasing. And secondary migrant is a term used to describe those students who are coming into the country, and their first home in the country is in a different location, and then within their first two years in the country, they are moving then to the Sioux Falls area. And whether that be for family connection purposes or work that might be available, whatever the reason, this is their secondary location. Currently, we have over 90 languages spoken in the homes of our students, and some of the most prominent ones are labeled there in the graph, with Spanish being the highest, Nepali, Swahili. I shouldn't probably go through these because I might not be able to pronounce them all, but you can see them all there. And you can, if you start to total up those numbers, you see quickly that it's far more than 2,353, which is the number of ELL students that we have. But that's every student in. But that's every student in our district. And some, even once they exit our program, that is still the primary language spoken in their home. And that takes that into account for all of our students. When students arrive and they register through our intake center, they meet with Kristen Smith, who's pictured there registering and working with a family. If they are coming to us with prior language acquisition scores, then we take those scores and we register them and place them in a school accordingly. But if they do not, then Kristen administers the WAPT assessment in order to gauge where their language acquisition is at. South Dakota happens to be a member of the WEDA consortium. WEDA stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. And that is a 39-state consortium. And because we are a member, we use their assessment to measure the language proficiency of our students on an annual basis. Once that initial placement has taken place and Kristen has determined where, what school they need to attend, they then go out and, and register and finish their enrollment process at their, at their school location. If they are less than two years in the country and they have less than a 2.2 on their language acquisition score, they are placed in the immersion center. If they have been in the country longer than two years or they have a language acquisition score higher than 2.2, then they attend one of our center-based sites. And I'll talk about those at specific grade levels in just a minute. If they are 17 years or older and are bringing in less than six credits when they arrive, we have a special program called President's Academy for those students. And that helps them work at their own pace. And if possible and with the right work ethic, they can actually work to advance this rate of earning credits. And so, that is an opportunity we have for those students. Taking a look at our immersion center enrollment numbers, so those students who do qualify within that, within that first two years of being in the country and those lower level language acquisitions, you can see that so far this year, we have already taken in 115 into the elementary level, 79, which is more than all of last year at the middle school level, and 82 at the high school level. The focus of the immersion center programming is acculturation and language acquisition so that we can do as much as we can to get those students ready to be successful in the mainstream academic environment once they graduate from the immersion center program. At the Elementary Immersion Center, they have quarterly graduations and those students then move out into one of the center-based sites once they reach that, those graduation requirements. Currently, our elementary enrollment numbers are listed here in the chart. And you can see how the FTE is proportioned based on the enrollment numbers at each building. Annie Sullivan and Cleveland definitely are our highest enrollment elementary center-based sites. Instruction in these centers is done through either a push-in model or, in some cases, a pull-out manner. When it's a push-in model, that means the ELL teacher goes into the classroom and there's either co-teaching that takes place or the ELL teacher is an additional resource in the classroom for those students, monitoring their progress, seeing if there are specific skills that need to be addressed in more of a one-on-one or a small group environment when necessary. Those ELL teachers are also an onsite resource of PSYOP strategies, which is our sheltered instruction strategies that we use in the district for those classroom teachers who need those additional resources and ideas on how to service those students all day long in the regular classroom. In addition to the number of students you see here, there are also 65 students that attend schools, elementary schools throughout our district that we do not consider to be a center-based site and do not have ELL FTE proportioned out to those buildings. And that's a parent choice decision. At the middle school and the high school, we again have the immersion center instruction offering at both, at all, at two middle schools out of our five and at all three high schools. Once those students exit from the immersion center instruction level, then they are exposed to sheltered courses, which means they have a high language acquisition focus within, layering on top of the content standards that are being addressed. ELL endorsed teachers provide that language instruction and they also serve as case managers for those students, making sure that their needs are being met. If there are needs that need to be addressed, then they sort of take on that case management role within the building as well. There are also 53 middle school and high school students that attend schools without direct ELL services. Some of those are placements, some of those are independent choice as well. As far as accountability goes, under ESSA, there are several different accountability or ways that the school district is held accountable for the language acquisition progress for our students. This year, starting for 17-18, we will be held accountable in our school performance index for 10 of the 100 points being allocated to the students' performance towards exit status. And we will, like I said, that'll be new for 2017. And, and those will be as a result of their access scores and how much progress those students are making towards exiting the program. You can see here in the graph that there, those are the, the counts that we have currently in the district with our ELL identified students or those students who are on monitor status. Right now, the current year, so for 16-17, the exit criteria was a 4.7 on the WEDA access test. With ESSA, so moving forward with 17-18, we will be moving to a 5.0 exit criteria. So, you can see that some of those students are at or, or beyond that exit criteria. And the maximum score on the WEDA access is a six. And so, that is why those numbers are all measured all the way up through a six. Students are considered a long-term ELL student if they remain in the program more than seven years. And you can see that 205 students in our current ELL status are what we can consider to be long-term ELL students. Of those 205, 46, 46% of them are also identified as students with disabilities. So, those students are on an IEP as well. It is the goal of the state under the guidelines in ESSA to have all students exit within five years of their first WEDA score. So, that will be the progression that we will be working towards with those students and really trying to make sure that students are on a path to getting the language that they need, both socially and academically, so that they can exit within that five-year When students do successfully exit our program, we are still required by law to monitor their progress for two years. So, we do that in our district with the assistance of a software program called Elevation. And that elevation monitoring process, so how that works is the students are all rostered in the program by their teachers and their teachers receive a form twice a year where they are, the teachers are asked to rank the students' progress and really kind of just fill out a quick form and a couple of comments on how the students are doing academically in their classroom. And then, the ELL teacher in that building takes all of the results of those forms, reviews those and determines if there's students that have slipped backwards, if they're struggling, if there's some services that we need to provide. And so, that's done twice a year through the use of that elevation program. Currently, in the district, there are 217, 273 students that are on monitor status. The majority of those students are on year two, as last year, we did not exit as many students. And that, if you remember from my report this past spring, the WEDA did a great deal of standard resetting and they changed what each of those levels, one, two, three, four, and five, mean. And so, we'd had fewer students exit this year. And that was to align to the rigor of college and career readiness nationally. And so, we will combine that with the movement from a 4.7 to a 5.0 this year. And we will see where we, where we end up after our access testing. That testing takes place every February and we get those results back about the middle of May every year. Funding, the current district budget is just over $4 million out of the general fund and over a million dollars, just over a million dollars comes from federal and grant funding on top of that general fund allocation. That federal and grant funding is down about $250,000 to $300,000 over last year, just due to the decrease in the way different grants were funded this year. Our district is the recipient of an extra per pupil amount. That comes out to a 1.25 per pupil amount. That was decided at the state legislative level in 2013. And so, students that score at a 4.0 or lower, the district then receives an extra .25 per pupil funding for each one of those students. So, that money is some of what we use on top of the money we would spend if the students were, you know, the money we would spend on every student in the district. And that's where that general fund budget is created. That is my presentation. I can take questions.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Do you think, would there ever be, has Department of Ed or anyone within the organization talked about trying to get that extra .25 for that gap from the four to five students, since we're now required to keep them in the program till they're the 5.0 WEDA score, to make up that difference since they're required to be in there?
The requirement was 4.7 when the legislation was passed in 2013 and it was passed then at a 4.0 or lower. I would tell you that I haven't heard of anybody that's working on or getting ready to propose that there be an increase in the WEDA level to match the increase in exit status. But I have had more people than I can keep track of ask that question.
Okay.
So, that I, I do know it is something that, of course, we would all love to see happen. It'd be great if they would fund it all the way up through a 5.0 until those students exit, because we do service them until they exit in the school district.
Well, perfect world, 6.0.
Yes. In a perfect world, the exit criteria would be 6.0 because that's when WEDA, on their own assessment, that's what WEDA says is the determination for when they are academically ready and English proficient. But the state has at least moved a little bit closer to that with a 5.0 status.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the English Language Learners Report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I was just going to comment, we have, you know, all of our students in our district work so hard to achieve great scores on their tests, but also just to get a good education. And you think about those that are doing that knowing English. And then, you think about the students who have to learn a language on top of working so hard to achieve that and the number of languages that are spoken. And it's just amazing how successful and how resilient these students are. So, I think that's a credit to our, our teachers, not just our ELL teachers, but our classroom teachers who are using, teaching the students who maybe aren't in a center-based or a specific program and don't have the resources, but they're still giving it their all every single day and making these students successful. So, kudos to them and kudos to the students who are really doing their best and wanting to graduate and wanting to learn another language at the same time, because that's really difficult. So, thank you for the report.
Thank you. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, passes.
Okay, our third report tonight is a direct reflection of our work and our strategic plan. One of the things I would say in this particular area, the area of attendance, is we've worked, we've worked really hard on this and we didn't see the gains that we wanted to see last year. We worked really hard at cheerleading and we worked really hard at incentivizing and we're still pretty flat in the attendance area. So, we could give up or we could try to figure out what's next. We've had a lot of work in this area by a lot of people. Deb Mullenberg-Wilson really headed up the initiative. And with the addition of Mr. Morrison to our staff this year, there was a really good handoff of the attendance baton to Doug Morrison. He's taken that baton. We've, we've begun a new initiative and he's going to talk in general about attendance, but specifically about our new initiative in this area. So, with that, I would turn it over.
Thank you. Well, as you're aware, part of our strategic plan is that we'll move the needle on attendance. So, it was interesting, when I went to the Department of Education at the state level, they did some presentations. And of all the data that they collect, the number one correlation of, that leads to positive academic achievement is attendance. It's the number one correlation. So, we still have to go back, so we, we understand the importance of attendance. As Dr. Maher said, we didn't move the needle much. We did increase the number of students making the, the bar, but on a percentage basis, because of our growth, we didn't grow it. So, so, the good news is, we have a lot of students that are right on the threshold. So, we have roughly 1,700 kids within three days of making that benchmark. So, we know, we just, we, we just have a little more work to do and a little more awareness to, to be created there. So, looking at innovation to drive some of this change, Dr. Maher came across a company called Kinvolved, who is, is being innovative with a, an application called Kinvo, which is a web-based application, also has a mobile app attached with it. And so, we have been entering and we entered into a pilot with them to work with five of our schools, Washington High School, Whittier, and then Hayward, LBA, and Hawthorne. So, we're very excited about that. They've had great success working with schools in the New York City area. And I'll let them in a minute, talk to the, about them, a little bit about their background. But we're interested in piggybacking off that success. And so, it's, it's really a mindset around communication with parents. And so, something I learned today, actually, the Ken in Kinvolved is Ken meaning family. And that's really what it talks about, communications with family. Certainly, the, the benefit of the app location is that it's a communications platform that brings in real-time attendance data. And so, our teachers, administrators at the building level will be able to see their attendance as within 10-minute increments, actually. So, that's very exciting to us. And then, they'll be able to take that data and communicate out with parents, guardians, or whoever else is, we can put into the attendance plan. We have been working the last month or six weeks on the data integration piece. So, Michael's team has been taking the data that we collect in the school district and have been working with the Kinvolved technical team to get it into their application. And so, we have just finished that phase. And this, this phase this week is actually the kickoff phase where we're actually out in the buildings, meeting with the attendance teams and showing the application and how to use that. So, that's been very exciting today. We met with this morning, all the building principals that will be involved in this to level set them again. And then, this afternoon, we were out at Washington High, meeting with their attendance team, getting them familiar with the application. And then, throughout the week, they'll be staging the rest of the schools for that. So, very excited about where we're at. And so, it's not too often that you get the founders of the company to come and introduce themselves to the school board, but we have that luxury tonight since everything worked out. And so, we have co-founders, Miriam Altman and Alex Meese. And Miriam, are you going to come up? So, I'll let Miriam come up and tell a little bit about their company and just introduce themselves. And like I said, it's, glad the timing worked out for this, so. Miriam.
My name is Miriam Altman. I'm one of the co-founders of Kinvolved, as Doug kindly introduced us. I'm also the CEO. Alex Meese is the other co-founder of Kinvolved, our Chief Product Officer. I've been working with Dr. Maher and his team and Doug and Deb on just getting the district set up and running. And Alex is going to be working very hard all week, working with the school teams on, on getting everything implemented. We're really excited for our work with this district. It's our first district in the Midwest, though I'm not, I'm not personally new to Midwest. I'm actually from Minneapolis originally, so it's really great to be back in the region. Just wanted to start by telling you a little bit about both of our backgrounds, give you a sense of who we are as the founders of this company. My background is as a teacher in the New York City Public School System. I started my career about 10 years ago as a high school teacher. Have many, many stories that are, even though New York City is far away from Sioux Falls, not all that dissimilar from a lot of what we heard today at Washington High School. Saw, you know, kids who were coming late to school, kids who were, at that time, not a term that we really talked about, but who were definitely chronically absent. You know, students were cutting out during specific periods of the day, leaving early and sort of running the gamut. And I found that we weren't effectively communicating this information to families. Families had changed their phone. Families had changed their phone numbers consistently. We didn't have access to systems that enabled us as a team at a school to really communicate with parents and keep track of who was receiving messages and who weren't. And also, of course, there's the fact that parents are speaking lots of different languages, which we've already talked about today. And so really, meeting them where they are is critically important. And I found that by focusing on attendance and really moving the needle there in my own classroom, I was able to see improvement academically, socio-emotional development. And so it's become a passion of mine for the last 10 years. Alex started her career as a parent advocate, working at a hospital in the South Bronx, which is our poorest congressional district in the entire country. She grew a parent support group of parents of children with autism from about five to 100 parents within a very short period of time. So we have really complementary backgrounds in terms of my experience in the classroom. Alex is really working in the community. And so, you know, hopefully you'll, it'll get a sense over the next very few minutes that I'll be talking up here of the passion for the issue that we're really excited to help Sioux Falls try to tackle from a different perspective this year. So a little bit about Kinvolved and what we are, you know, Doug mentioned the technology, which is definitely where we're starting here, but we really think of the company as a full-service solution to improving attendance. And so we actually offer three different services. And I'll just give you a quick overview of what those look like. First of all, we actually offer summits, which are basically convening members of community from mayor's offices, city agencies, community-based organizations, school district administrators, teachers, you know, teachers, school administrators, parents, really, you know, many, many different stakeholders, and bringing those folks together in a common place, convening them, bringing in experts to talk about attendance and why it's so critically important. And then really having an opportunity for these people to share best practices, workshop, come around common messaging so that an entire community is bought into this initiative. In New York City, which is where Doug had mentioned we launched, we've actually held three summits so far. We just had one about three weeks ago where we had 85 members of the New York City community coming together. And every time, we get incredibly positive feedback about how critically important it is to have that FaceTime. The second thing that we do, which is a component of what we're doing this year as part of our pilot here in Sioux Falls, is what we call community and culture coaching. And so that really is professional development onsite. So that's, you know, a big thing that we're working on this week with Alex being here. And that really has two end goals. One is to, first of all, and that's what we're really working on this week, get everyone up and running the technology, make sure everyone's comfortable, they understand what the key components of the technology are and how they'll really fit into their best practices at their school. Each school even then, even today that we met with has slightly different objectives, slightly different cultures, and so how they're going to implement the technology looks different. We're really sensitive to that. The second goal is really to eventually, as schools become more comfortable with the technology, help bring in some of those research-based best practices that we've really learned from becoming experts in this field over the last five years, working with researchers and really key experts in the field and making sure that schools know what could be most effective. And then, of course, on the ground, what we're launching this week is the technology, the third component of what we offer, Kinvo, which is an app, as Doug mentioned, that is both web and mobile-based. It's also available on tablets. And it's really simple in its concept, but it's had pretty profound impact in many of the schools we worked in. Essentially, we read data from Infinite Campus, the student information system, attendance data specifically, and we send real-time attendance alerts via text message, but also email and robocall to parents and guardians in very close to real time. We pull data every 10 minutes, period by period for the high schools, daily for the elementary schools. And it goes directly to a parent's cell phone. They don't have to log into an app. It's very low lift. It's translated into about 60 different languages based on parent language preference. They're able to respond, which is different from a lot of tools that are out there because we're really trying to promote engagement, opening up dialogue between school and home that may not be happening around attendance, but really about a number of different topics as well. So when we were meeting with the teachers at, and the counselors at Washington today, they were excited about the attendance component, but also the fact that they can communicate about sporting events and, you know, parent-teacher nights or updates to specific parents about how a particular student's doing or a class assignment and so forth. In addition to the communications component, attendance teams in particular will be able to access a number of different reports to really help inform their practices and make best use of their limited time that they have together, meeting as an attendance team on about a weekly basis. So that's sort of the whole spectrum of what we're offering, just to give you a sense. You know, like I said, it really takes an entire community, we believe, to solve absenteeism challenges. And so, you know, I listed out already a number of stakeholders that we engage, but just to kind of visualize this for you, all those different folks. Even the technology alone, you know, we do really intensive training with different people. So teachers get a different sort of benefit out of the technology than a student support services person or a counselor or an assistant principal. And so we're really thoughtful about making sure that those people know how this best fits into their day and their practices. So to talk about some of the impact that we've had, we've been working in the New York City public schools for now five years. This is our fifth school year. We do rigorous impact assessment every year, both looking at qualitative and quantitative data. And what we saw last year was that compared with the previous school year, our schools improved attendance at a rate that was 13 times better than the average New York City school, so a peer-to-peer comparison. So definitely seeing movement here. We work with some of the most challenged schools in the city. I'll run through the demographics in just a moment to give you sort of another metric to think about in terms of the communication. We saw more than 4 million messages that were exchanged between schools and families last year alone. So as I mentioned, you know, and I wanted to, you know, quickly share some of the impact on the ground as well. So we talk to teachers all the time. We talk to parents. We talk to administrators. And I think this quote really illustrates some of the stories that we see in the data. So this teacher, Ms. Covington, who's a science teacher at a high school, renewal high school, which is one of those that has a really high population of Title I students in New York City. You know, she was talking to this New York Times reporter and pointed out one particular kid who was early for class. And she said, you know, "That's a great example of how Kinvo and Kinvolved's partnership with our schools helped make an impact." This kid used to come late every single day and now she's ready, you know, here before the class has even started. And she said, "That's really indicative of what we're seeing across our entire school." And again, that's something that we are confident that we'll be able to help achieve here in Sioux Falls. And then I just wanted to kind of give you a sense of the student population we typically work with. You know, we work with schools that run the gamut, but really, when we looked at the demographic data of our schools, we saw, on average, that our schools enroll students who have, you know, higher rates of, or excuse me, schools that have students with higher rates of English language learner populations, students living below the poverty line, students who are typically, you know, living in more challenging conditions than sort of the average even New York City school, which, you know, is kind of, has a lot of those demographics begin with on average. And so just like to outline that. And so, you know, when we're talking about, you know, the impact, we're incredibly proud of the fact that some of the impact we're seeing is with students where the needle's traditionally been really hard to move. And so I'll just kind of conclude by sharing some of the awards that we've received from a number of different institutions for the work that we've done. We've, you know, we're always learning and we're really excited to be here in Sioux Falls and working with your team this year because, you know, there's always a lot more to learn, but certainly we've gotten some good recognition so far, which we're really grateful for. So I've given each of you a one-pager when I, before the meeting started. You're welcome to take a look at that. My contact information's also there and certainly happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. I asked Doug for kind of like preliminary where we were with the elementary schools and the three schools that were using it are in the top six of our improvement of districts. So that's fantastic. And I guess my questions would be, when looking at high school, particularly where their kids are more transient, moving from classroom to classroom, how do you get the teachers, because I've seen it at one of our high schools, it's sometimes the teachers don't report it till the end of the day that the student was absent, so then it's not real time, the kid's not there. How are you getting them to make sure they're doing that? Or when there's a substitute, for example, in and they're bringing down the list to the, to the student services office, how do we get that all locked in together so that's real time?
Yeah. So there are kind of two questions there. The first question around how we deal with the fact that sometimes teachers don't work attendance-taking their schedules. So, you know, we read the data from Infinite Campus. We are going today through some of the reporting functionality around just utilization. That's a big pain point. So not utilization necessarily of our technology, but because we rely on reading the attendance data from Infinite Campus period by period to make sure that the communications are going on in real time, like you just said, Councilwoman Mickelson, you know, the teachers have to take attendance in close to real time. So there's a report that any administrator can pull to see which courses for which attendance has already been taken exist. You can also get an email automated in pretty close to real time. So if teachers aren't taking attendance and administrator knows that and can follow up pretty quickly just to try to help sort of imbue that practice into the, you know, earlier part of the day. We also know that teachers, even though they're not actually engaging with the responses from parents around attendance, there's actually one main point of contact at each school, they'll start to see an improvement. They'll start to hear from kids. You text my parents, you know, I, my mom found out I was late or I missed fourth period. And so the kids are hearing at home. I also, we talked today a little bit about potentially rolling communications out with students. It's still something they're evaluating, but that's another way to kind of get students engaged with the technology as well. So, you know, basically, teachers see the impact and so they're more motivated because it's a reason why they should take attendance now in real time rather than just, you know, it's compliance, I have to do this for the district. And like I said, we also enable those reports so that administrators can follow up more quickly. The third piece that I would mention is that this is really a collaborative tool across teachers and really all staff. So if I'm a first-year teacher and I log in to Susanna's account and I see that, let's say I'm a fifth-year teacher, I see that, you know, attendance hasn't been recorded for the first four periods. Well, I don't know now when I'm logging in, is this kid absent this entire day or is she just cutting my class? And so it really, you know, helps with that sort of community push as well. You know, "I would love for you to take attendance, Ms. Altman, so that I can see if the student has come in earlier." So it's really kind of a culture shift at the, at the staff level as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Exciting to see the progress.
Thank you.
All right. All, can I get a motion in a second to approve the attendance update?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm impressed with, with what I've seen. I read the report thoroughly, the results that you have in New York City. One of the questions that I had as I read it, is that really going to be able to be replicated here? You've assured me that it is and I, I trust you and I, I think we've got a, we have to move the needle on attendance. Outside of my school board work, I'm a, I own a staffing business. And the biggest challenge that we have today with employees is no matter how good you are, no matter how smart you are, no matter how well-educated you are, if you don't show up, you aren't going to make it, you aren't going to be successful. So I see it on the adult side and I think the involving kin is very important. The pressure from, in our case, with our business, the spouse, the, you know, whoever it may be, the parent or the guardian isn't necessarily the key person. And you know that. You have to find the, you have to find that person in that family that is going to motivate the child to be there. And I think this is a, is a great tool for us to look at. And I, I expect that the pilot's going to be successful and we'll move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thanks for being here this week and working with our teams. Can't wait to hear more at the end of the week, right? Don't give us a little update? Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion, update passes.
Our final report comes from the business office tonight and Todd Veek regarding budget guidelines and timeline.
Of course, we're about a third of the way through fiscal year 18. We had a, three weeks ago, we had a first quarter report on that. In four weeks, you're going to hear the final, final wrap-up of the FY17 budget when the audit report is presented to you. And tonight, we're taking our first look at FY19. The budget process is beginning. We met with the school board budget committee in the middle of October, kind of went through these guidelines and bringing them to you tonight for approval. I'm not going to go through every one of these, but I'll touch on some of the highlights. When we're looking at the budget committee level, we're, we're asking them again, and we almost always do maintain class size ratios at elementary, middle, high school levels. Don't take the easy way out to cut the budget or balance the budget by increasing class We're also asking, like we did last year, for everybody to prepare, all the committees to prepare at least four budgets. Of course, the current level program, what does it take next year to do what you're doing this year? And then a 10% reduction or a 90% of current program, a 95% of current program, and a 98% of current program. We're also asking, I'm actually going to jump down to the bottom one here. We've done this for quite a few years now and we kind of like it. When you're preparing federal budget programs, they know we have, they have a set amount of money. It's based on what we're going to get from the federal government. You can't, you can't cut it and take that federal money and spend it on something else. So we asked them to prepare a couple, at least two budgets so you can, the board and the budget committee can look at. We can do this, these programs with this money or we can do those programs with that money. And the first year we did that, we had some really good, good conversation about it. And that leads to the one above that, where we're asking for the second year now, if a, like the elementary group is meeting and they're going to propose an expansion, well, where can we find the money, assuming we're not going to get large increases from the state? And I think the message's already out that we probably can expect not a, not a very large increase from the state because of their revenue, so, coming in lower than expected. But what, if you want to, if you want to add, if you want to do an expansion, how can you fund it? And if you're the elementary principals, don't say, "Well, the high school can be cut." And if you're the high school, don't say, "Well, the elementary can be cut." So can they find somewhere within their own, their own level to possibly offset that? So we're asking for that as well, again. We're also asking that when you prepare your impact on program narrative, that by cutting down to here, this is how it's going to impact our program, that they tie it back to the strategic plan and the goals and the strategies so we can see how it is actually going to affect their program based on our, you know, we try to budget to the strategic plan. And finally, at the district level, when the budget review committee meets, we're going to ask them to align the fund balance that they bring back to the board, that the fund balance is aligned within the five-year budget plan and that if you have to do something, can you prepare, can they prepare revenue deficit options to align with the five-year budget plan? Is there another source of revenue? Last year, we increased the opt-out, we didn't use it all. Maybe you go more into that a little bit. Maybe you don't have to use as much depending on how things work out. But matching up the revenue and the expenditures to the five-year plan. Very briefly, again, I won't talk about all these, the budget timelines. December 1st, we're going to have the enrollment projections, that's prepared for the budget preparers. That's good because we're going to meet with the board shortly after that and start talking about our facility planning in a couple days of that. Jump down to, on the 23rd of February, all budgets are due. In the middle of March, right after the main run of the legislature ends, the K through 12 Budget Review Committee will meet and they'll establish recommended program levels for the, to bring to the school board. And then the first Wednesday in April, on the 4th, we will have a public work session on all K through 12 funds, go through that in detail with the school board. And then on the 9th, which is the first regular board meeting in, in April, we'll have the public hearing on the FY19 proposed budget and then the tentative adoption so that HR can start hiring new teachers based on that tentative adoption. And then the final budget will be adopted and levied certified to the auditors on July 9th. That's your annual meeting for the school board in FY19. I'd ask you to approve the budget guidelines and timelines and I will stand by for questions.
Any questions for Todd?